Once again, a pleasant evening to all of you. Requesting everyone to please rise for the prayer for the food to be lent by Reverend...
Declare that indeed Jesus Christ is the living...
Light of life. As such, oh God, we remember that you have given us a command to let our light shine to all people, so that they may see our good deeds and they may glorify you, oh Lord. Let it be that as entrallians, as the central spirit continue to bind us all together, let it be that our school and as alumni and as one community, the people around us may see you in everything that we do. Lord, as we partake of your blessings tonight, we thank you for all of this. These are all from you and we acknowledge it, oh God. Let it be that as we partake of this food, we will remember your faithfulness, your goodness, and your mercy. And Lord, as the rain is going down in the field tonight, we thank you that for a few minutes and a few hours, you have given us a good weather, that we have completed the switching on and the fireworks display. Indeed, you are awesome, oh God, and we bring back all the glory and honor to your name alone. This is our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Yes, after everything that has happened outside with the opening of lights, I know that you are all very excited to enjoy the sumptuous dinner that is prepared. So ladies and gentlemen, let us all have a great dinner. Food is ready. And while we are enjoying our meal, we will also enjoy good music from our band, Techno Trio. You may now have your dinner. Thank you.
I live the house, I catch the buzz that go to work the way I did before. The same routine most every day except I guess I see my books much more. A year has passed, I thought but now that I could make a new life on my own. But heaven's so, so hard to break. I think of you and I still, it takes too long to learn to live alone. It's really bad when Friday comes because I know the weekend lights ahead. The ones we took, the football games and when it rained, how late we stayed up there. I've thought so much to change the house, the attic's full of memories I know. And yet then I turn off the light. I wait for you to say goodnight. It takes too long to learn to live alone. I go and dance, but when I do, I always find before the night is through. The same old thing, behind my smile, I'm sitting there comparing them to you. And in the end, it's always you I'm feeling even more when I get home. I thought that I was free of you, but I was wrong. I never knew it takes too long to learn to live alone. And in the end, it's always you I'm feeling even more when I get home. I thought that I was free of you, but I was wrong. I never knew it takes too long to learn to live alone.
It's right that I shouldn't care about you. I'm trying to make you happy when you're blue. It's right, it's right to feel the way I do because, because I love you. It's wrong to say I don't think of you. Cause when you say these things, you know it makes me blue. Give me one kiss and I'll be happy. Just, just to be with you. Give me, give me a chance to be near you because, because I love you. Give me one kiss and I'll be happy. Just, just to be with you. Give me, give me a chance to be near you because, because I love you. Because, because I love you.
Salud Dayan? Niara. I said I had to dance, so I went to the show alone. Turned out the lights, I turned up the projector on. And just as a maze, the world started to begin. I saw my talent and my best friend walking. Though I was sitting there, they didn't see. And so they sat right down in front of me. With kiss tellings on the sign. And in the middle of a colored cartoon, I started to cry. Oh, sad movies always make me cry. Oh, sad movies always make me cry. Even so, I got up and slowly walked on home. Mama saw the tears and said, "What's wrong?" Should you keep on telling her all that? I just said, "Sad movies makes me cry." Oh, sad movies always make me cry. Oh, sad movies always make me cry. Sad movies makes me cry.
All the places I remember of my life. Those simple choices that were ever not for better. Some are good and some are made of these places and their moment. We love each other, still in the past. Some are dead and some are living. In my life, I love you more. But of all these friends and lovers, what is in love and me here? Memories lose their meaning. When I think of love or something new, though I know I will never lose affection. For people who lost that were before. I know I'll always stop and think about them. In my life, I love you more. Know I will never lose affection. For people who lost that were before. I know I'll always stop and think about them. In my life, I love you more. In my life, I love you more.
I miss a moment in space when the dream is gone. It's an only thing. I miss the morning goodbye, but down inside, you know we'd never know why. The road is thorough and long, where I stand, and the feeling is strong. I turn away from the world, I stop on the floor, but I give you it all. I am not alone, and I do everything to get you into my world. I hold you within. It's a love I can't have, over and over again. I'm lost. When you return at night, you're the one I need, so no question of time. We've been in all of this dark, two and I, living in each other's heart. We're living in each other's world, you're the one I love, I believe what you say. No journey's ever alive, I stop on the floor, but I give you it all. I am not alone, and I do everything to get you into my world. I hold you within. It's a love I can't have, over and over again. I'm lost. Oh. I am not alone, and I'm talking to you. I know how you feel, what I want, I want to. It's a love I can't have, over and over again. I am not alone, and I do everything to get you into my world. I hold you within. It's a love I can't have, over and over again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Someday, when I'm awfully low, when the world is cold, I will feel the glow. I will feel it tonight. Your lovely face with your smile so warm. And your cheeks are soft, they're turning red. And the way you look tonight. I see your tender eyes, they're tearing my hair. Your touch is sweet, your touch is hard, and it's hard. Lovely. And I never change, keep the promise strong. What you bring, what you do, come. You. Just waiting to. Your touch is sweet, your touch is hard, and it's hard. Don't you ever change, keep the promise strong. What you bring, what you do, just I know you. Just waiting to. Tonight. Just waiting to.
I still got this feeling, Mary, you're getting every time. But sometimes I'm never, I try to match your face of you. I spent all my time on you, seventeen I know. Those who love is rare in space, like the angels so brave. Destiny made us come, inventing lovers on the farm. We call the faith and dance with me, the miracle, the seed in me. It isn't all the same, at seventeen. Brown eyes, red lips, and tears, we never knew it would come. That is the one to play, we all together, there is a song. A relationship on time, we never said what we need. And when tears come, I need you for the other day. Remember those who went together, we still love the same day. We don't share the heart, we can't do the best, take it through. The small town nights we gave, to the love who won't say no. Think we can see, and seventeen.
The world's a wonder, the turn of the lights are waiting. The turn of the lights are waiting. The show, the sun, the sun, the sun. The dream, the dream, the dream. The dream, the dream, the dream. The show, the show, the show. The dream, the dream, the dream. The turn of the lights are waiting. The show, the show, the show. The dream, the dream, the dream. The show, the show, the show.
I'll never be late in love, I must be safe. But I never had this hope with lovers before. Darling, couldn't complain, I see this part of history. Do we want time, but we want what they have. And I'm not a very special man to you. It's a feeling that's untold, oh, 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 it's where you are. And I'm not a very special man to you. And it almost breaks me to, squeezing me tighter. But I'm never gonna learn. No, not like the rest, I know you want it the best. You're here, more than you should have taken, nothing in return. Say, always with me, every night, always with me. Girl, present, not to count on, no ways to love you. And I'm not a very special man to you.
Well, the feeling is not totally new tonight. Because there's a feeling of the Central Spirit binding all of us, would you agree?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we need a louder yes for that one. Could you ask the question again, sir?
Can you feel the whole, the Central Spirit tonight?
Yeah.
That is better, a lot better. It's not only felt, it will be seen as you observe these people in front, right here.
Yes, catching up and reliving stories, good memories of all the time that they have spent here at Central.
Oh, yes, those were the days, but these are the days right now. Okay.
Yes, everybody loves a good photo opportunity, right, sir?
And have their friends in pictorial memory.
Exactly, and as we have observed, it might be drizzling outside. But inside the EMC conference room is also a downpour of people who truly love Central Philippine University.
So it's a different kind of drizzle in here.
Indeed, we have, of course, members of the CPU Board of Trustees and Corporation joining us this evening. Led by, of course, the Chairperson of our Board of Trustees Attorney Von Lovell Bedona.
We also have the CPU Corporation.
Members of the CPU Corporation?
Members, CPU Corporation, yes, yes, here they are.
Of course, we have with us members of the CPU AAI Board of Trustees and Officers of the CPU AAI, and of course, our friends from the different departments and colleges, right, sir?
That's true, and we have the students who are Central at Central.
Indeed, and yes, we will now officially start our evening's affair, and to do that, sir...
We'd like to call on Engineer Isagani J. Halbuena, our President of the CPU AAI.
To give his welcome greetings, of course, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much to our Chairman of the CPU Board of Trustees, Attorney Von. And I think I cannot, is the Vice Chair around, no, lasa no? Anyway, the CPU, also, Si Bon is the Chairman of the CPU Corporation. My greetings to President Ted Robles and Mom Angel. Welcome home also, ang akong naso-on, soonelie obligasyon. And all the members of the CPU AAI Board. Welcome also to CPU, ang aton nga PNP Officers. Thank you very much for your big, big help. And let me take this opportunity to thank everyone, especially the CPU Administration, who helped us with this annual event. And notwithstanding, the pulao, kagbuktaos, ang aton nga mga designers, installers, switchers, our hats off sa ila, you can see the beautiful designs and the lights and the decors, no? So to God be the glory. So anyway, tonight is our Part Two, the induction of CPU Board of Trustees and Officers for 2020-2022. I would like just to make a very short thank you to all aton nga Board of Trustees AAI who also helped in, especially in passing, without any objection, all the resolutions. Support. Doh wala agin sangman smots sa hiling, no? And I'd like to congratulate the incoming President, Attorney Joshua Alim, ang aton nga Vice President, Dr. Tino Alertal, and Mainstay, no, ang atong Corporate Secretary, si Pastor Francis Neill. Ang aton nga, nagka-kips ang aton nga treasurer, kay treasurer ni Samo. So si Corporate Treasurer, Engineer Balogo, thank you very much. And our Auditor, nga nagka-check kun may mga overspending, daw ay man, no, Auditor? Anyway, so again, my heartfelt thanks to all who helped us, no? Who helped me in my term. And as going out President, I do like to thank you all, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Engineer Isagani Halbuena, the President of CPU AAI for Academic Year 2018 and 2019. Of course, tonight, this event is very much blessed with the presence of our University President, Dr. Teodoro C. Robles, and tonight, we will listen to one very special message. Ladies and gentlemen, a round of applause to our University President, Dr. Teodoro C. Robles.
Thank you, okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here with you, especially with these pillars of the university. We have the Chairman of the Board of Trustees, Attorney Von Lovell Bedona. The members of the Board of Trustees, several of them are here today. The members of the CPU Corporation. And of course, this event was organized by the CPU Alumni Association Incorporated. And thanks to Engineer Isagani Halbuena for a job well done. And of course, with the support of the Board of Trustees of the CPU AAI. Now, if I mention important people here, who are all of you, then it will be probably the end of my message tonight. So I will skip that, and thank you for your presence. And let me share with you my message today. We have just witnessed the opening of lights, which is an annual tradition of this university, and our way of community engagement, welcoming people to the Centralian community, making them feel Central's way of celebrating Christmas, a joyous season, a commemoration of the birth of our Savior, Jesus Christ. And of course, we're happy that we have a lot of people joining us, sharing their time with us in celebrating the birth of our Savior. And also, this is a way of relieving memories, as many of us have walked along the halls of CPU's majestic structures, while we recall at the beauty of sparking lights adorning the beautiful 24 hectare campus. This annual tradition is also a way of reflecting what these lights mean to our lives. The light has always been associated with a guide, that through it, little may glow, but we always find our way. The university stands as it is today because of the light that showed the way to the American Baptist missionaries who founded this institution and devoted their lives and sharing what they have and sharing with us also their belief, their faith in Christ, in spite of coming into an area where they don't know anybody, nor they were new to, or they were new to this place. Now, what we have is an institution that has grown so much, from seventeen students in 1905, and now we have more than 13,000 students and almost 1,000 employees, faculty and staff of this university. But of course, if you look at the world around us, we can see the contribution of the many hundreds and thousands of alumni all over the world. And we hope that many of them will gather here to share with us the grand homecoming in February 2020. And I hope to see many of you as we celebrate the homecoming of alumni and share with us the celebration year at Central Philippine University. It is the same light that has also guided each one of us as we dedicated... as we dedicated what we have and what we can maximize our potentials, exhausting our resources to serve Central Philippine University. It is the same light that has led our founders here, sustain our hearts even at the most difficult circumstances, and that has kept our faith even more anchored to Him at the strongest storms and at the darkest days. Light is also equated with hope, as we say, "light at the end of the tunnel." We are all witnesses to how this university adapted to the changing times. There were instances in the past when the status quo was not in our favor, changes in policies, the shifting educational landscape, but we remain hopeful. We look forward to the new day with a glimmer of light, a glint of hope that these two shall pass as we survive all the challenges we have faced in the last many decades. As we wade along the waters, though with uncertainty, we held on to each other and to this promise that He is the light of all mankind, one that shines in the darkness this year. Angel and I this year had to extend our stay in the US. Series of tests and checkups constituted most of our days, and days turned into months. What could have been time spent with friends and family became slow, quiet moments of recovery. For somebody who is always working and is used to doing something, it was that kind of break that although I know I needed, I dreaded, but the light within me continued to shine. It was the ray of hope that eventually made me appreciate the slow, quiet recovery spent with family members and friends. It was the same ray of hope that made me look forward to coming home to Iloilo and to be with my CPU family. The lights are also a reminder to all of us of the kind of life we should live. The words in Matthew, Chapter 5, Verse 16, "Let your lights shine before others that they may see your good deeds and glorify your Father in heaven." This tells us that our actions and decisions should be a reflection of our Father's selfless love and compassion. Beyond photo opportunities and the titles and privileges that come with our positions is the level of dedication and sense of morality that is responsibility to serve the Centralian community for a bigger purpose. Let our work, our service to Central be our way of living a life that reflects God's unending faithfulness. Tonight is the start of another year for the members of the CPU Alumni Association Incorporated. With the challenge of the grand alumni homecoming next year, we will expect this year months and weeks. May we not lose track of why we are put in our respective positions to serve our fellows in Philippines while keeping in mind that service to others is service to God. May the challenge that we will face and the difficulties that we will hurdle not dim our lights, and may we all continue to illuminate love and compassion for our beloved Central. May God be with us all as we fulfill our duties and responsibilities to Central Philippine University. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much, sir. That gives us and inspires us with a light of hope for CPU in the years ahead. CPU shines, shines even in competitions. And that includes our University Day, and tonight, we will be blessed with the winner of the trio competition with Ms. Chini Marie Genanchal, Ms. Jamil Kate Alba, Ms. Selena Molina from the College of Medical Laboratory Sciences, winner this UDA of the trio competition. A hand please for our winners.
Another round of applause to Ms. Chini Marie Genanchal, Ms. Jamil Kate Alba, and Ms. Selena Molina, our winners in the University Day Women's Trio Competition. Thank you very much for that beautiful rendition of "Million Dreams", and I believe, sir, all of us here have million dreams for our beloved Central.
Dreams that we would like to turn to reality.
Definitely. At this point, we would like to proceed to the next very important portion of our evening's program, the induction of our CPU AAI Board of Trustees for the Academic Year 2020-2022. And our inducting officer is no other than our University President, Dr. Teodoro C. Robles. But before we proceed to the induction, sir?
We would like to call on loyal sons and daughters of Central who have decided to serve in the Alumni Association Board of Trustees, either elected or re-elected. Engineer Ray El Balogo, please come forward. Doctor Glenn A.M. Cathedra. Mr. Daniel P. Dorilio, sir. Doctor Perla A. Suyo. Honorable Milliard S. Villanueva. From Metro Manila across the sea, he could not be with us, but I will still mention his name, Mr. or Engineer Ray Cordova. But here with us is Mr. Carl A. De La Penya. And Mrs. Nancy A. Fernandez. From Mindanao, we have Doctor Vita Basiao Gasataya. We also have Doctor Florentino Alerta. Australasia is a bit far continent.
Yes, indeed, and we don't want to be that far to from our newly-elected and re-elected Board of Trustees, so we would like to request our officers, members of the Board of Trustees of CPU AAI, to kindly occupy our center stage.
Please come up, ma'ams and sirs. We'd like to recognize also Mr. Mauro E. Sumodio, though he may not be here right now with us. And from USA and Canada, Mr. Rod Gonzalez. He's not here with us right now, but February, I believe he'll be here. Mrs. Imelda Franhe Villar Valia Carcel. And Mrs. Perla Gillegan Waters. They're out somewhere out there right now, but in spirit, they are with us.
Will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, bestate your name, having been elected as the, state your position. Of Central Philippine University Alumni Association Incorporated. Do hereby solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my ability the duties of my present position that drew to my threads as alumnus. I reaffirm my loyalty to my alma mater, that I will lend my precious time to enable me to actively participate in all its affairs, harness my energy to foster a vital and continuing relationship among my fellow alumni, and in words and action forever keep and violate the Central's spirit with honor and pride. So help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations to our new members. And while Sir Robles will remain for the officers. 2020 will be a big year for CPU, and the Alumni Association will be doing much. Congratulations again. And to steer the Board of Trustees of the Alumni Association through this challenging year, we have our incoming President, Attorney Joshua C. Alim. Incoming Vice President, Doctor Florentino P. Alerta Jr. The Second. Our Corporate Secretary is Reverend Francis Neal Halanduron. Our Corporate Treasurer is Engineer Ray El Balogo. And the Corporate Auditor is Attorney Von Lovell C. Shosan Jr. And the Corporate Auditor is Attorney Noel C. Shoson Jr.
Will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I wish to state your name. Having been elected as the State Your Position of Central Philippine University Alumni Association Incorporated. Do hereby solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my ability the duties of my present position that drew to my plans as alumnus. I reaffirm my loyalty to my alma mater that I will lend my precious time to enable me to actively participate in all its affairs, harness my energy to foster a vital and continuing relationship among my fellow alumni, and in words and action forever keep and violate the Central Spirit with honor and pride. So help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations to our newly-elected officers of the CPU AAI. Now, we would like to request all the members of our CPU AAI Board of Trustees, officers, to kindly have their photos taken onstage. Of course, we would like to request Dr. Robles and Attorney Madonna to join our officers and the members of the AAI Board of Trustees. There you have it, ladies and gentlemen, our CPU AAI Board of Trustees and officers for academic year 2020 to 2022. The talented, beautiful men and women behind CPU Alumni Association Incorporated. Congratulations, and let's give them a round of applause. Photos are a very important part of any vacation. As they say, "No photo would mean it never happened." So with all the photos that were taken tonight, definitely, the induction of officers and welcoming of new members of the CPU AAI really helped it. So from one induction to another, this time, we will meet the members of the new group and they will be inducted by Engineer Isagani J. Halbuena. Ladies and gentlemen, the induction of Centralians in mass media. As I call out your name, kindly come here in front. Rafino Gonzalez. President. Janelle Baklay, Vice President. Maggie Malarado, Secretary. Roy Sehab, Treasurer. Jason Pagunsan, PIO. Annabelle Pettingly, Board of Director. Yolita Gupia, Board of Director. Francisco Elma Buena, Board of Director. Saos Natividad, Board of Director. Roche Rochilz Luenasco, Board of Director. Teb Francia, Board of Director. Jean Laysa Lozbanies Galiarte, Board of Director. And Francis Neil Halanduron, Board of Director.
This place right now. I wish to state your name. Having been elected to the position of State Your Position of the Central Philippine University. Do hereby solemnly swear that I will well and faithfully discharge to the best of my ability the duties of my present position that drew to my plans as alumnus alumna. I reaffirm my loyalty to my alma mater that I will lend my precious time to enable me to actively participate in all its affairs, harness my energy to foster a vital and continuing relationship among my fellow alumni. And in words and action forever keep and violate the Central Spirit with honor and pride. So help me God. Congratulations.
Please remain on stage, everyone. And we'd like to call on the members of the Board of Trustees of the Alumni Association to join because Reverend Roger Kimpo will pray for all of us. For the newly-elected and inducted members and then officers of the Board as well as the new chapter. Can we please come forward quickly? So join me as we pray for our offices. Shall we pray? Lord, it has pleased you to choose and put these persons into positions of leadership in this organization. I just pray, Lord, that you will enable them to faithfully fulfill the responsibilities of their office and to be worthy examples to the constituents, to humbly do works and service, to be ready to strengthen the unity of every alumni association, to strengthen the working relationship and partnership of the university and CPU Alumni Association. Bless them with one heart and mind that they may work together effectively as a team. Bless them with joy as they work together and may your name be honored and glorified through that. This is our prayer in Jesus' name. So bless you.
Thank you, and once again, congratulations. Yes, and as we have witnessed the beautiful ladies and gentlemen onstage, we will be requesting some of them to be back onstage as our CPU AAI Board of Trustees will render a very special number. And this is... And the number will be led by Trustee Engineer Vettine Idimbe.
We sing this the first time, but the second time, we invite all Centralites to sing with us. Remember, we are Centralians, also called Centralites.
Ladies and gentlemen, a round of applause. This is the first and last practice, or it is second and which one, sir?
Well, it is the first rehearsal.
First rehearsal, okay. Let's give a round of applause once again to our CPU AAI Board of Trustees.
In this picture, si no, ah, is a CPU that time? No, no, that would have been a CW. I don't know the year. We picked it out from the Centralite book. Were you there? Kilalanyo toong gawali? Go back in time. Central is feeding us and for the right. Each to be proud is a Centralite. Searching for truth, we shall come to the light. Fortunate students of Central. Here we prepare, learning to share. All for a purpose enduring. In lives earned as grace, may we all have the grace to stand for the presence of Central. Central is feeding us and for the right. Each to be proud is a Centralite. Searching for truth, we shall come to the light. Fortunate students of Central. Here we prepare, learning to share. All for a purpose enduring. In lives earned as grace, may we all have the grace to stand for the presence of Central. Through hard times, they did. And now let us hear from our incoming president, Attorney Joshua Allen, some words.
Some words, sir. He is the Sir President, Sir General, and the President of the AAI. The President of the CPU Alumni Association. Shall we give a round of applause for President of CPU Alumni? Good job! The Chairman of the Board of the CPU Corporation, Ayman Linoi, 31 local, Midland, South. He was a member of the Corporation in San Francisco, MS. You know, the position of President, it was really a heavily contested position. Yeah. There was somebody who was really a strong contender. And with the nominee chairman, the retired prosecutor, Jeremy Una, open for the casting vote, just somebody stood up because he's a very strong contender. And he said, "I nominate myself." Fortunately or unfortunately for me, first donut, maybe the chef, the cashier, Attorney Ansomo with the candidacy. But according to him, it was really democratic process. So that they make sure the tonsils are straight when they contract. But ako lang yung may contract, the rest, and opposed. Congratulations to all of us. this is a great responsibility as the President-elect of the Central Philippine University Alumni Association Incorporated, being the mother associations of 160 more orders. Alumni associations go all over the world. To borrow the words of advice of Uncle Ben, to his nephew, Peter Parker, in the movie Spider-Man. The uncle of discovering that his nephew has this amazing power, he said, "You know, with great power comes great responsibility." In our association, there is no such thing as great power, only great responsibility. I have to be humble and sincere to volunteer to serve for the Lord God Almighty to our alumni association. So, it's very happy to serve, but you know, if you just observe our routine, you can hear a lot of antics coming from the retired prosecutor Jeremy Buna. Like, "Doc, no, no, we'll be celebrating his birthday tomorrow." Like, Attorney Anso Mo, permisi kina sa wali imam nang say, "Sugar mo." But we enjoyed a lot, really. Yeah, because, uh, we're family. Already, it's family, sa ato board. You know, I commit, I commit myself in execution of my rights and responsibilities to earn the confidence you have placed on me. I draw my strength from knowing that I will be serving at the beginning, at the beginning of autumn next year, working with a group of people sincerely, which I call as a committed team, my family in the Alumni Association. I may consider myself as the captain of the ship, but the support and cooperation that the crew is very indispensable in order that ship towards its destination safely. And that is very important. I will, we will continue to cooperate with the CPU University, with the university. We'll continue the good job been made by the previous presidents. Attorney Von, the former president of CPU Alumni, endure sagana, but certainly with the help of the members of the board, certainly we can. Senkay kwanila kari, it will be okay. Because we'll continue to cooperate with the officers of the university so that we can enhance work and strengthen the central spirit of all alumni all over the world. That's it. We'll have laid down some programs, but this is not a proper forum. So again, to the untied support of all the members. Do, maya sa simple. My voice will be heard to be. Puli ma kasag. Sa nineteen, may kasag. Sa closing ceremony of the festival, may kasag, God may.
It's on.
It's on. Again, please come in our closing ceremony. And Doc No, no, really requested na la pat may kiti. Karaoke di sa ato. In our office, the Alumni Office, we have already done monitor. But certainly enjoy the day. Thank you so much, and we'll continue to pray for the success of the CPU and the Alumni. Thank you so much, God bless you. Thanks.
And now, please rise if you are able, and sing fervently our Central My Center. Shall we hear a clap and cheer for Central?
And sir, your task isn't finished yet. As you will, I believe, still lead the singing, group singing. Uh, we wish you a Merry Christmas. I would love to lead, but I don't want to cause heavy downpour outside, so sir, take it away.
Okay, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
We can go around, shake hands, singing. We wish you a Merry Christmas. Wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Good tidings to you, to you and your crew. Good tidings for Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I believe we have some announcements from our Corporate Secretary, Engineer Ray Balogo. Do settle down.
Corporate Treasurer.
I believe this is the most important part of the program, the acknowledgement, otherwise this year. Anyway, CPU and CPU Alumni Association would like to thank the following sponsors. Dr. Marvin Santos, engineer and business. Henry Alcalde. Toadola, Maceros Philippines. Mr. Andre, an honor and a smile of Kyle and Jos Keterick. I hope you enjoy the food tonight. And Dr. Alexis Ted, and Angela Bless, thank you. Waterworld, Iloilo. Thank you. This event will not be successful without the hardworking of the 2019 Festival of Lights Working Committees. Our chairman, engineer, and secretary, Albuena. Thank you, and of course, our chairman. Lights and Designs and Concepts Committee, Mr. Ephraim Alfaraz, Cheika Van Benabinita, CPU Cheeto, Sini, at iba pa. Centralian Visual Arts Society, Modern Interactive Digital Artists Society. Lights Installation and Maintenance Committee, Engineer Will Howard Fernandez Delion, Mr. Rizaldi Andrade, Light Stalkers and CPU Power Class Personnel. Physical Arrangement, Engineer Rick Alan Madonado and Sharp Personnel. Mr. James Estonico and France Personnel. Mr. Adolfo Lescleria and Billings Personnel. Program and Invitation, Professor Estambros Rumarati. Prosecutor Jeremy Buna. Reverend Francis Neil Halandon. Reverend Roger Kimpo. Miss Chris LaHoya, Mr. Rodrigo Suto. Miss Ralen Gotiko. Mr. Hippolyto Dorotio. Miss Januari Love Disamerro. Mr. Ascension Baqista. Miss Naika Abaldo. Michelle Jane Lovito. Mr. Randy Lerro. Miss Julian Sabran. Miss Merna Eraldo. Miss Gloria Marcalinias. Miss Carmela Francis Romero. Miss Tina Hartelano Mantina. Salamat din. Uh, Advanced Technical Committee, Mr. Donald Durelia and AMC Personnel. Mr. Tumitina Romano and David Channell Personnel. Mr. Jelisio Cronado. Mr. Slimon Peter Handinero. Miss Nestli Taala. Publicity and Documentation Committee, Reverend Francis Neil Halandon and CPU Office of Communication Personnel. Miss Hannah Canlas and Information. Decoration Committee, Mr. James Estonoco, Estinoco. Miss Borrell M. Honduras and the University Decoration Committee. Full Committee Engineer Aurora Lynn. Miss Tina Marie Hortelano. Security and Safety Committee, Attorney Noel Susan Junior. Mr. Jonathan Tomalay. Mr. Georgie Roy Juarez and DC. University Security Committee. B and B Personnel, Hero Fire Department and the SWAT. Youth Parental Committee, Mr. Ernest Alaturo. Mr. Tim Arandilla. Amos Royce. Mr. Primo Vergara and General Rico Ferre Garcia. Prime Minister Richard Manolo and General Limby de los Santos. Special thanks to the following for their support. CPU Administrator, Senator Dr. Bellas. CPU Board of Trustees, Headed by Attorney Von Lobel Meduna. Members of the CPU Corporation, Deans and Principals. CPU Officials, Headed by CPU President. Engineer Rico Ferre Garcia. Members of the CPU Parliament, Headed by Prime Minister Richard Manolo and Officers of the Local Government Units. Barangay Lubisayna Officials. Barangay Dugun A Officials and Barangay Affiliates Officials. And of course, the CPU AI Board of Trustees, Headed by Engineer Sagani Albuena. Special announcement. The all Centralians are here, and then kilala niyo. Be reminded, you are all invited to attend the Grand Alumni Gala May 2020 on February 5 to 7, 2020, here at CPU. For more information, please visit our CPU Alumni Office Office, 0333292904, or the office of the CPU President. 3203824, or email at homecoming@cpu.edu.au. So I hope you enjoy this kind celebration, and we look forward for your participation next year. Merry Christmas and glad business all, thank you.
Thank you very much, Engineer Ray El Balogo, our Corporate Treasurer. Before we close this evening's affair, we would like to request all the members of the CPU AAI Board of Trustees and Officers to kindly have your photo taken again onstage. The more photos, the better. So we would also like to invite, um, Dr. Robles to join us. Uh, Attorney Von Bedona to join, uh, our officers and members of the Board of Trustees. Mantina, do we still have some more requests for more individuals to join the picture taking? Okay, so once again, Sir Robles and Mantina are invited to join our CPU AAI Board of Trustees and Officers. Of course, Attorney Bedona is also invited to join in the group picture taking. And we would like to request everyone to please rise for the closing prayer to be led by Reverend Roger T. Kimpo, our parish pastor.
If you shall will stand for the prayer and meditation. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for how you blessed our time together and our fellowship. We ask now that your blessings will be upon each one of us as we part from this place. The Lord bless you and give you. The Lord make his space to shine among you and be gracious unto you. The Lord lift his countenance upon you and give you peace. Amen. Then bless you.
Merry Christmas, everyone. May we all still enjoy whatever is left of our Friday evening. God bless us all, and to God be the glory. Oh, before we end, yes, we also have one more singing. The singing of Ode to the Sign, sir, it did not take it away.
Okay, as we all stand, we did a performance, um, letter you. Letter you. Okay, let's go to the sides, please, as we will sing Ode to the Sign. Let's go to the sides, please. So that when we sing the second time around, magian may kita. Yes, do old hands. When the old friends we forgot and never brought to mind. Should all acquaintance be forgotten and days of old land sign. For all land sign, my dear. For all land sign. We'll take a couple kindness yet. For all land sign. I would like to divide the road into two. And there is a destiny nearly. Starting from here, the Abdo Joshua Ali, they will go this way. While Mampa Durnelia, up to the last person, they will go this other direction. And as they pass each other, makamustahan ay kita. So, Mampa Durnelia and this half moon, this half moon will go that way. While Mom Obigashen and this half moon will go this direction. Okay, my angel, all of you will go this way. The other half moon will go this way. Makamustahan ay. Okay, that's it. No, 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 no. Kamusta, go, that's it. Should all acquaintance be forgotten and never brought to mind. Should all acquaintance be forgotten and days of old land sign. For all land sign, my dear. For all land sign. We'll take a couple kindness yet. For all land sign. Should all acquaintance be forgotten and never brought to mind. Should all acquaintance be forgotten and days of old land sign. For all land sign, my dear. For all land sign. We'll take a couple.
And yes, we can finally say that may we all enjoy the rest of our Friday evening. God bless us all, everyone. Merry Christmas once again, and to God be the glory.